Always this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcast or rebroadcast on Westford Cat. We have everybody here, so we'll be able to do roll call. We start with open forum. Mr. Genowitz, do you have anything for open forum?
No, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shafer?
Yes. We started, we've had two meetings now with the Pedestrian Improvement Plan Advisory Committee. This is a committee that's being funded under the MBTA Communities Act, and it's focused on a study area of Littleton Road from the Littleton Town Line all the way down to approximately just east of the Neshoba Valley Local Technical Technical High School. And there's going to be an upcoming workshop similar to what was done with MBTA Communities, I guess now a year and a half or more ago, as well as there's going to be an online survey. I don't know the specifics as to when this is going to come out, but they want to accomplish this prior to the end of December, and it may be coming out here any week now. And so I just ask people who are interested in this topic of pedestrian trail access related to Littleton Road, specifically related to that area going down towards Powers Road with the MBTA community housing, pay attention to the town website. They will be announcing a couple of workshops for residents, for business owners, property owners, as well as an online survey. So I just want to make that announcement tonight. I'm hoping that we can actually announce the specifics at the next meeting if it hasn't already been published by the next meeting. So that's it.
Great. Anybody else, Johnny?
No, thank you.
The audience? All right, we have no public hearing, so on to general business. Item A, 103 Main Street, Unit 4 and 5, CJ Links Indoor Golf Request for Administrative Review and Approval for Change of Use From Printing Establishment to Golf Course Golf Club. Evening.
How are you?
Nice.
So my name is Brian Deminguez. I'm the owner over there of CJ Links Indoor Golf, 103 Main Street, Unit 4 and 5. So I'm here following the zoning board's approval for a special permit to complete the administrative review for the change of use. The space was previously a light commercial unit, was a printing press, so we're looking to convert that into an indoor golf simulator facility, coded as they believe it's golf club, is what we have it as. All activity will remain fully indoors, using the existing footprint, parking and utilities with no exterior changes or construction happening there. Our operation is by appointment only, keeping traffic light and well within the existing parking capacity. Will be a low-impact, family-friendly recreational use that complements nearby businesses and adds year-round activity to Main Street there. So we're excited to bring something new to Westford that I don't think we have here, and appreciate your time and support. That's it for me.
Great. Joe, you have anything to add?
Not much, Mr. Chair. As the applicant mentioned, this did go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals following the building commissioner's determination that it fell under golf club or golf course. It wasn't necessarily the need is fit for virtual golf per se, that's what the building commissioner's determination was, so that required a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the applicant did obtain that relief, so now I was here for change of use from you all through the administrative process, which was filed before special town meeting.
Bob?
So I am fully in support of the administrative review for this. However, I'm not real, I'm not comfortable with the way it was classified as a golf course or golf club. It really more cleanly fits with commercial indoor recreation. And when I researched this last week, in other communities, I'm trying to find the list here, this has been done and acted by a special permit as a commercial indoor recreation for golf simulator, self-borrowed, did the same thing, same classification. And in Fitchburg, they've actually, I guess, specifically called out golf simulator, indoor golf simulators, as a commercial indoor recreation activity. When you look at the definition, I don't understand how it fits under golf clubhouse, because that's a clubhouse facility built for members, guests, and visitors using the golf course. And it doesn't fit a real golf course, because it's a virtual golf course. So I just want to, at this point, go on the record as saying that and request that maybe we have town staff look at modifications to the zoning bylaw, the zoning use table in the future. Specifically look at, I think adding an indoor golf simulator is one potential, or breaking up commercial indoor recreation into small and large, or small, medium, large. I understand specifically, because we have other commercial indoor recreation that we've had to deal with, and there was quite a lot of onerous results because of the size of that business. That's not the case here, is. Indoor golf simulator fits perfectly within Zone B. The problem is, commercial indoor recreation isn't permitted in Zone B. So what they, I think I would have been happier with was what if they had gotten a variance from the ZBA as opposed to a special permit for a use that really doesn't fit the definition of their business. So I just wanted to go on the record saying that.
We had another golf simulator business, if not still have one, did that get similarly classified?
Yeah, this is the Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu place, is it?
Well, they moved that into Millworks.
Oh, is it in the simulators in Mill?
They have Millworks.
Well, that would fit within commercial indoor recreation, which is what that is. So I just really, I'm all for supporting this. I just wish that...
But hold on, but it started next to Silver Palace, where you mentioned it's now a jiu-jitsu place, so did that also get similarly classified like this?
You could certainly look into that if the board was interested in that.
And I think I generally agree with Bob. I mean, this doesn't really, to me, fit the, a match for it being a golf course.
Yeah, I probably wasn't clear in saying that as a golf golf course, it's, that's permitted. A golf club is permitted in Zone B, which is what this is. Okay? But commercial indoor recreation is not. That's the, that's the problem here. So, but anyways, that's, that's what I just wanted to go on the record saying that, because I think we, we need to fix this in the future.
Good point, Bob. Charlie?
Yeah, I do agree with what Bob is saying. I think, you know, it definitely fits. I mean, I initially, when I was looking at it, assumed it was commercial rec and, you know. But anyway, I, again, I still fully support it. I understand the ZBA is granted special permit, so I do support it. I only have one question, is signage, even have exterior building signage or?
Yes, there's exterior building signage going up or being replaced. I would say there's a refacing going of the whole facade for everybody there.
Oh, for the entire building?
Yeah, yeah, there'd be a little fac.
They have a temporary sign up already for CJ Links.
Yeah, they have a temporary sign up, just kind of promoting that it's going to be happening, but above on the facade, there would be new signage going up for everybody, actually, so, yeah.
So, Joe, was there any discussion about this prior to tonight?
In terms of why the building commissioner chose that, I mean, certainly did ask, you know, among the potential options, and we obviously threw out, you know, a few different options for what we thought maybe could be considered by reading plain definitions. His determination was golf course, golf club was what he found to be fit the best. You know, obviously, we could try to get a little more detail from him if you'd like, just for future considerations.
Yeah, for sure. I think that conversation should be had.
I mean, I did place calls to Joe and Jeff like last Wednesday when I saw this was on the agenda.
I don't know if this is the case at the place that's now in Millworks, it wasn't, but I do know you have a subscription model where, where members have 24-by-7 access to the location.
No, we're not doing that anymore.
Okay. That wasn't the rate up, though?
Yeah, it was. It was initially, but since the zoning meeting, we just discussed it's going to be a 7 to 9, 7:00 a.m. and then 9:00 p.m.
Because I wear a condition of approval.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I haven't updated the website, because we're not open or getting close to being open, so, but no.
Okay, so members have access from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
Well, anybody, the public, anybody has member, has access from 7:00 to 9:00. As a member, you get a little discount on the hourly rate. That's sort of the incentive there to be a member.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions?
No. I like the idea. Good question, good point on the indoor recreation, because, you know, it could be, I wouldn't be surprised to see another simulator applicant come in down the road as well.
Hopefully it's me for number two.
Pretty interesting. Is this your first one? Is your, okay.
Yes, sir.
Interesting, so. No, I think my only question was, and I, before I read the ZBA thing, was the hours, because I think that we had the discussion years ago with this plaza, and there were certainly hours of operation, because remember the signage? So I'm glad to see that the ZBA said, okay, limit the hours, otherwise I'm no issues with it.
Great. Anybody from the audience? It is general business, but if anybody has anything to say? All right. Yeah, I don't have any issues with it. I think a discussion does need to have with our code enforcer to figure out, you know, which direction we're drawing on these things, but we'll get to that. So can I get a motion to approve request for administrative review and approval for change of use from printing establishment to golf course for PB 2531?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Just a question, what's the lounge going to be, just like a?
Just a little couch with some TVs. Yeah, before, after, if they want to hang out. Yeah, just a spot to hang, essentially. Nothing crazy.
Great.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Totally appreciate it.
Thanks. Next item, PB 2512, Stanley Way, minor modification request for increase in size of Building 3 to 4,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet, reduce size of Building 4 by 1,000 square feet. Swartman?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Here with me tonight, Gary the Bell, with GM Westford LLC. We were recently in front of the board with this project, so I think everyone's familiar with it. Included a major commercial project, site plans, stormwater management, and then two special permits for War Pod Impervious and parking to eliminate some of the green bank, some of the parking spaces. Since the approval, Gary's been working and talking to potential occupants and renters, and he's been getting some feedback on the size of the units. So we're here tonight requesting a minor modification to just swap some of the square footage from one of the buildings in the back, Building 4, to Building 3, to make it slightly larger, just to make a better, more efficient use of Building 3. Building 3 is the, it will be the first one on the right when you first pull in, and it'll face Groton Road. We did submit a red line showing it. The increase goes from 40 by 100 to 50 by 100, so 4,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. The building out back, it may be a little bit more than 1,000 square feet, I was looking at some of the math, and the building 4 is currently 60 by 104 for 6240. And if you go to 50 by 104, that would be slightly over 1,000 square foot reduction, so it'd be 5200. So we may end up somewhere in that range, but we will reduce Building 4 by a minimum of 1,000 square feet. The parking doesn't change, there's just a slight shift forward. We do have condition number 13 of the stormwater management permit requires us before filing our building permit that we submit the stormwater plot plan. It confirms the footprint to how the, the planning board approved. Kind of applies, I think, more effectively with subdivisions, because houses, I think, tend to change more from the box that we show on a definitive subdivision, where I think site plans are kind of more fixed, but I think this still applies where we could show the change, you know, run it by engineering, make sure they're comfortable with the drainage. We're not changing the parking, we're not changing the traffic, travel movements. The building out back, obviously, will get smaller, so there's less of an impact. We're not changing the total impervious area for the site. So it's, I think we can catch up with engineering with that kind of conditional proof, or condition that's already in the stormwater management permit. I think that's it. I know that I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Joe, did you have anything to say on this?
They didn't. Just for perspective, I'm just going to pull up the approved site plan for your law. So Building 4 is the, I guess if you were looking at it from the left side of the third building, going along the left where there would be four, so it's this one here, where it kind of gets probably closest to this new residential home on D. Donato.
Yeah, I prefer that view smaller.
Thought about which way it would come, would come away from that.
It would definitely come off the property just with the parking arrangement out front and lining up the travel aisle and all that, we would shorten the building on the backside.
So I don't know if you would ultimately want a plan showing that to be submitted for engineering review and approval, just a thought.
Nope, that's a good idea, actually. And we, we have no issues with that. I think that probably makes sense so that it does happen on the backside and not anywhere else.
Yep. Bob?
No, I guess the only question I have is Board of Health, if they review this and engineering.
Yeah, we didn't receive many comments about the requested change, I think just given that there really wasn't going to be much in terms of change of any of the layout or impervious area, if there are any concerns that, so.
No, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
I think it's a better layout, but.
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it, I just question it's, the building you're making bigger is getting deeper, not wider.
Correct.
Yeah.
In both cases, both the, the changes are at the depth of the building.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, just provide a revision to Building 4 for engineering, I think that's great.
Joe? Same vote? Darren?
No, as long as engineering has no issues with the drainage and the change, I'm happy with it.
So do we want a motion to approve this, subject to engineering approval?
Yeah, I'm on 5 and 7. Yeah, I'll move that we approve PB 2218 condition as we just mentioned.
Second. All right. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good luck. PB 22.
I gave the wrong key number in the last one, so let's amend that and get the right.
I give the wrong key number, you take it.
I have one more. So I will amend the motion that I just made, PB 2512.
Amendment to the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have PB 2218, 164 Main Street, request for minor modification to demolish the existing barn and relocate three parking spaces on the property. Swartman?
Good evening. There's nobody else here, so I'm by myself. I thought there was someone back there, I really did.
Somebody jacked what you're about to say, that's going to happen.
Here on behalf of the Maury Brothers General Contractors, this is 164 Main Sheet. It's been a little while since we've been in front of the board. It was actually approved back in '22, they'd been working on it. It's a historic renovation, I think it's taken a little bit longer than expected, but they are starting to pull things together. They're, we're working on landscaping, I know interior, they're getting close, but it's been under construction since about the spring of 2023. This is the property, it was in, kind of in the center of the old Anderson Fruit Farm. It was, I think, originally associated with a Drew apple farm, but they are renovating. It was under the, the expansion of a house that was built prior to the, to the building, to the zoning bylaw, and it's went from a two-bedroom or two-family to a three-family. So we're here tonight, part of that approval, and on the far left, was that existing barn was to be converted into garage spaces. So it kind of, all was built into our parking counts, you know, we had focused the parking off to the left, there was some existing parking there, and we kind of focused all of our parking with that barn. Since then, the building inspector has condemned the building, it's scheduled to be torn down, it's deteriorated beyond repair, and scheduled to be demolished. And so while we were out there, I was out there with Jeff Maury, and we were talking about kind of reallocating some of the spaces, we did have those two spaces for Unit C to the far right, and so we said, well, let's kind of spread some of these parking spaces out where you don't have that connection to that barn anymore, or that garage parking. It seemed to make sense to kind of now shift some of that parking closer to the entrances. So we're here tonight, we're not reducing any of the parking, we're keeping the total parking spaces at 11, and we're just requesting to move those three interior garage spaces to kind of now be out front, and then modify the walkways to just connect them and be more efficient with the walkways. I know we were working with Historic, and Joe may know a little bit more about this, the goal of the barn is to demolish the, the structure, but kind of leave the foundation intact. I know Historic had requested for, keep it intact for future preservation, archaeological potential with the foundation, so the goal is to kind of backfill it in place and kind of leave it intact.
You couldn't still park there, make that parking?
I don't think so, with, we were trying to, I think before, where we had the garages, and then we had the parking space in front of each unit, you know, I think the goal was that you would have the ability to park in your garage and then park behind it, and then we were, with this, where the garage is going away, we were kind of just getting away from that stacked parking. The Board of Appeals asked the same question, what's the difference whether you have a garage there, and to me, it was just inherently different when you have that garage, and you don't have the garage. I think people are more, less apt to kind of double park, where if the garage door is parked and you, you come in and you park in front of it, it, there's a slight difference, and I just didn't know how to describe it with the board. We did go to the Board of Appeals, got approval, and Conservation has signed off that one parking spot to the far right is within the 100-foot level buffer.
So you mentioned you went to Historic, what, what was the approximate construction date of the barn?
I don't know, I believe there is a, in the foundation down below, I looked for it, but you're not, it's supposed to be in the, it's condemned, so you're not supposed to be in it, but I did sneak into it quickly and I looked, but I believe there is a, a date in there of some form that they were trying to preserve. But I don't think they know exactly the, the history of it compared to the house with the Reed farm.
Historic, Historic Commission's been involved from a demolition, delay perspective?
Yeah, they were involved when they had an onsite meeting with the building inspector. I wasn't part of that, but I know Attorney Robbins was involved, the building inspector, staff, and the Historic Commission.
Okay.
Anything to add, Mr. Genowitz?
Just, just in terms of the, the building commissioner, so it was based on a letter received from a structural engineer saying that the building needed to come down, that he, he referred to have to come down. So it wasn't just him unilaterally deciding it needed to happen, it was based on, it was presented by a structural engineer.
All right. Bob?
Yeah, no, I'm fine, as long as we dogged the i's across the t's for Historic, I'm good.
Charlie?
Yeah, mine considers historic value. And so you're going to leave the foundation, or do you just put topside grass?
Yeah, backfill it in place, exactly. And then if, I, I was talking with the builder and asking, you know, I don't know, and I don't think they've, where it hasn't come down yet, was to kind of leave the top kind of exposed so you could kind of see the outline of it. At least that was my initial thoughts.
It's like what they did at the first tee at Butterbrook, where they had the foundation of the old barn that they've preserved and made at the tee box for the blacks.
That's how I pictured this, and this could be a.
Same idea.
Sitting area, whatever, you know, you have that outline, and we can certainly work with staff to encourage that with the developer. I know it hasn't come down, last time I went by, at least, I went by last week.
Not done yet, no.
And it was still up.
I have my, thanks.
Joe?
Well, understanding that, I guess that kind of changes things. The question that I had going in is why, why not use that barn pad also to be the three parking spots? Why move them to where they're sited? And kind of wondering if there's any, you know, introducing those two spaces there as an additional sort of like backing out situation, where you sort of have people leaving, I guess there's like, what, six parking spaces on that parking pad? You know, just whether or not, but I mean, it's just a small parking area, so people will figure it out. If somebody else is backing out, they're obviously going to stop, it's not like it's a commercial parking area. But I just, I was just sort of like, when I looked at it, I'm like, oh, why not use that spot to just put in the additional three spots? Why, why move them? But I sort of trust you guys have a plan for like parking movement through this location for the people living there, so if you think that that works for all four residents, I guess I'm amenable to it. I didn't realize you were planning to keep sort of like a vestige of the old barn sort of there, which would obviously preclude like pave it over and put it.
Exactly, and that was like, at least my, like I said, I've had the conversation with, with the developer, and we can certainly encourage that, because I think it's an opportunity to make it a showcase, like, kind of, I, I think there's an opportunity there.
Yeah, sure.
All right. Darren?
Yeah, I have an issue. I would encourage you to say, if you could do something like you said, like a sitting area up there or something, has that foundation sort of surrounding it? That way it also would discourage people from just parking in there, like throwing in additional cars and stuff like that.
No, I think if it's done right, it could look nice.
Yeah, exactly, so I, I think, I think it's fine.
All right. Great, yeah, I think it's fine. I'd like to see something done there, I don't need to say what everybody else said, so.
We'll make it a pocket park.
Fire pit up there.
Fire pit.
Is there a motion approved, 22, PB 2218, 164 Main Street, request for minor modification to demolish existing barn and relocate three parking space on the property?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we have 2026 meeting dates. I don't know if everyone had a chance to take a look at these.
Yeah, wanted to get these on your radar. Didn't know if you all had any known conflicts with any of the meeting dates presented in here. There is the off chance to, we may have to look to schedule one just in between, say, November 16th and September 1st, just a little bit over a month there, but there's Thanksgiving holiday, so just something we'll have on your radar, just depending on the level of business that's in, you know, maybe to try to schedule something in there, but I don't mess right now, it goes a month in there, which is a little unusual.
Yeah, my first purview, I think it's fine, and again, I'm always amenable to adding a meeting if absolutely necessary down the line.
The only question I had was about that December 21st meeting, and why the 21st as opposed to the 14th?
Well, 14th is typically around, the second Monday is typically the Board of Health meeting date, they typically meet the second Monday of the month. So if they were, right now, they do meet all virtually, so again, if we had to shift the meeting date around to meet some sort of deadline for when we had to open a hearing or something like that, we could certainly look to move it around with them if they're still meeting virtually, so.
So do you want to know if there are any known, mature conflicts?
That would be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, I know July 13th, I, I was at one of them.
It might be away that week, too.
So we could either, just have this scheduled and just in the interim, look for a separate meeting date for that particular timeframe. Do all of it work, or we could try to come back for the next meeting or something, but if you want, we could just leave it as is for now and just find a separate meeting date around that.
Those will be doing in July, could be busy, could be dead.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on meeting dates? Want to review draft minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 18, 2025? I will be kind of.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes, do we have more?
We didn't get those, Mr. Chair, so just the minutes for you this evening.
We do have an E update from KP Law, the significant changes from property clean energy facilities.
Yep, so this could be another regulation we'll have to bring our bylaws consistent with. These, however, won't, the final regulations won't be issued until March 1st, so it's not really in time for annual town meetings, so it's going to have to be something that would be looked at for special town meeting next year. They have draft regulations out that are available for comment, and then they'll finalize them by March 1st.
All right. Great, anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it, everybody.